Well, hello, we're back. Session twenty of Twenty for Twenty Twenty. We are on the twentieth session of our Revelation Bible study. I want to say thank you so much for being a part of this. I know that God has opened up your eyes, God has opened up our eyes, as He's revealing to us His message, that He wants us to clearly, boldly, absolutely one hundred percent understand. We did a session called Twenty for Twenty Twenty. We believe that God wants to give us hindsight, vision, looking forward, not just Twenty Twenty hindsight vision, but vision looking forward. And so, I want to say thank you so much. We're gonna be digging into the last chapter of your Bible, Revelation, chapter twenty-two. And we're gonna wrap up and summarize and go through, and kind of wrap up our final session for this book of Revelation. Listen, if you've been with us for the first nineteen sessions, thank you so much. If you've missed them, or you've missed any in between, you can go to our website, which is WhitestoneChurchTX.com, and go to the drop-down menu, give us your email or contact information. We'll send you the notes on our YouTube channel, which is WhitestoneChurchTX. Our YouTube channel, we've categorized all of our Twenty for Twenty Revelation Bible studies. They're all labeled Session One, Session Two. Tonight, we're on Session Twenty. And so, let's pray. We'll get started. And I know that God's got something great to share with us tonight. So Father God, we love you, and God, we bless you. And we thank you, God, for honoring us with Your Word and Your time. Holy Spirit, we love you. God, thank you so much for revealing Jesus to us, revealing Jesus the Christ, the Messiah, Yahweh, Adonai, Yeshua, Yeshua Hamashiach, Jesus the Christ. So Father, we love you and we bless you, in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen. I want to give a shout-out to my bride, who's done all the amazing background work. She's been behind the scenes the whole time, and she has done an amazing job. Do you want to come say hello to everybody? Just, just everybody say hello, and let's give her a huge whoop-whoop. Good job. So, very, very-
Thank y'all for joining us, we love you all.
Listen, uh, she's been running around trying to put all the stuff together. She's done a great job, and so, thank you so much. Turn with me in your Bible to Revelation, chapter twenty-two. Uh, we'll recap after we finish up this chapter, but I want to pick back up in Revelation, chapter twenty-two, verse six. Jesus, John, who, the Revelator, John, who's writing the book of Revelation, is, is finalizing the Bible. It's an amazing concept, if you think about it. This is the last of God's Word. This is the last few paragraphs of Jesus' Word. And, and the amazing thing is, when we think about it, when people are on their deathbed, we, we rally around them to hear their last words. We, those last words are usually the most important. Most people on their, on their deathbed don't talk about, hey, you know, frivolous things. They talk about last messages. And so, this is the last of our God, recording His Word through His men that wrote the Bible, recording His Word for all generations. And so, when we read the last words, let's take them with the gravity of God's last words to us on this earth. And here's the cool thing. His Word is complete, it's sufficient, it's enough. It's what we need. Anytime we're, we're in need, it's because we don't have enough of the Word of God. Anytime we're in fear or doubt, it's because we're not, we haven't consumed enough of the Word of God. The Bible says that the Word of God will bring us comfort. The Word of God produces faith. Faith comes by hearing, and hearing by the Word of God. Look at Revelation, chapter twenty-two, verse six. "Then he said to me, 'These words are faithful and true.'" The words that you've read during this Bible study, they're faithful and they're true. Man, you want to, you want to have something concrete in your life? You want to have something that you know is truth? When we watch the news today, you know, especially with this Corona stuff flying around, when we watch the news, a lot of us are like, man, I think that's fake news. You know, where'd that reporter get his report? You know, is that video, is that from, you know, four years ago, when the hospital was real crowded, or is that from yesterday? You know, what, what's the deal? So, so when we look at our news reports, we, we sometimes struggle with what we, what we consider, what we want to be real. We turn, listen, the Word of God is faithful, and it's true. It's outlasted the skeptics. It's outlasted the test of time. It is transitioned. It is, it is, um, it has traversed across humanity, the, the world, earth, our lifespan. It is faithful and true. "And the Lord God of the Holy Prophet sent his angel to show his servants the things which must shortly take place." Don't just fly over that word servant. God is showing you, His servant, things which must shortly take place. Verse six, chapter twenty-two, verse seven. "Behold, I'm coming quickly. Blessed is he who keeps the words." Blessed is Cameron, blessed is Whitestone Church. Put your name in the Bible. Blessed is he, blessed is she, blessed is the man, blessed is the woman, that keeps the words of this prophecy of my book. Listen, I want to encourage you to keep the Word. Keep the Word of the prophecy, prophecy. God's revealing to you Jesus, His Son. He says, "Take these words." Well, I don't really understand the words. Take them anyways. Keep these words close to your heart. They're faithful, they're true. Kick out, um, the, you know, we do not, uh, don't put these words out of your mind. Don't, don't, it says, "Keep the words of the prophecy of this book." Don't, don't put these out of your mind. And what I mean by that is, if Satan wants to say to you, "Oh, you don't understand anything, Cam- Cameron's got all these..." No, you've got the answer, it's right here. God will reveal it to you. Don't let the devil tell you that you don't understand Revelation. Don't let the devil say, "Put that out of your mind. Those aren't your words, those are just for the pastor, those are just for the scholar, those are just for the seminary guy, girl." No, put that, put the lie out. Keep these words close to you. It says, "Keep the words." Listen, even if you don't understand them, keep them. Even if we don't fully grasp the big picture, we're gonna hold on to these and say, you know what? I do, I do have this truth, that this is the revelation of Jesus Christ. Listen, you understand the first five words of this book? You understand the book. We've hammered that. This is not the Book of Revelations with an S. It's the Book of Revelation, the revelation of Jesus Christ. Listen, keep those words. Keep the words of these book, of this book. Don't let the devil tell you, "Put that out of your mind, put that out of your mind." Put Satan out of your mind. Kick the devil out and say, "You know what, devil, you're, get out of here, you're a liar. I'm this, I'm a son of God, I'm a daughter of God. God doesn't hold things from me, He wants to reveal His Word to me." So just know this, keep these words close to you. If, if you've read them for the first time, read them again. Read them again. You don't understand it, read it again. Keep reading it. This word is rich. This word, it's a deep well, it's so deep, we can't even begin to scratch the surface. Keep these words of the prophecy of this book. That word prophecy means that these book, these words are prophetic. They have life, they're alive, they're not dead words. This isn't a story. See, mythology, stories of our past, fables, tales, uh, you know, good or bad, those are dead words. Those are stories written for a time period. And today, they're not alive. These words are living, they're prophetic. They're, when you put the Word of God inside of you, it'll start to grow in you. It'll start to root out fear and plant peace. It'll start to root out bitterness and plant forgiveness. It will start to root out misunderstanding and plant wisdom, knowledge from God. Put the words of prophecy, hold on to these. "Now I, John, saw and heard these things. And when I saw and heard, I fell down and worshiped the feet of the angel who showed me these things. Then the angel says, 'Do not do that, for I'm a fellow servant, and your brethren, the prophets of those who keep the words of this book.'" Again, this angel says, "Man, I worship God too. Don't worship me, I worship God, I'm an angel, I worship God. Don't worship angels, we don't worship angels, we don't pray to angels, we don't talk to angels, we talk to God." Can I get an amen? "For I'm your fellow servant, and your brethren, the prophets of those who keep the words of this book." Worship God. Worship God. Don't worship the devil, don't worship money, don't worship, uh, the guy down the street that says he's God. Don't worship the false theology that makes you feel good. Worship God. It's time we get back to just worshiping God. How do I worship God? Man, you just get on your, your face and say, "God, I worship you." You raise your hands and say, "God, I worship you." You shout, you clap, you dance, you sing, you worship God. You worship God. Don't worship a false God. False gods will be destroyed by El-Eleon, the most high God, the true God, Jesus the Christ. Verse ten. "And he said this: 'Do not,' Cameron, don't seal the words of the prophecy of this book. John, do not seal the words of the prophecy of this book, for the time is at hand.'" Listen, don't close your Bible. "No, I'm gonna seal this book up, and I'll wait till the preacher preaches on it in fourteen years, and then I'll open it back up." Don't seal this book. Well, I can't really tell people about the Word of God, because I'm not a trained theologian, theologian, and I don't really know the Word of God. Don't seal the word of this book. It didn't say, if you got a seminary degree, if you're a preacher, if you're a great missionary, if you've never had a divorce, if you've never committed sin, then, no. Ever, do not seal the words of this book. This prophecy is to be shared. "Well, Pastor, I don't really even understand this shit, what to share." You understand Revelation one-one. This is the revelation of Jesus Christ, share that. You understand more than you think. You understand there's a throne in Revelation four and five, and before the throne, angels are worshiping, and there's twenty-four other elder thrones. You could tell your friends about that, you could not seal that up. You could say, "Hey, listen, I don't know if you ever thought about it, but what's the throne of God look like?" And your friends will go, "Well, I don't know, God's a big hairy old guy sitting up top in this big..." No, no, let me tell you about the throne, let's read it together. Don't seal, because the time is at hand. Listen, don't let the devil tell you. Listen, one verse out of this Bible can destroy a lifetime of demonic lies that are killing somebody. "One verse of truth will set them free." One verse of truth set you and I free. One word of truth combats lies. Listen, don't tell me you don't understand the Book of Revelation. Do not let the devil tell you that. Keep these words close. Learn them, memorize them. Dedicate, you know, I'm gonna just memorize Revelation one, the first whole chapter, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep these words close. And when the devil says, "Put those words out of your mind," you don't even know what they mean, you don't understand Greek, you don't understand Hebrew, you don't understand... Devil, you're a liar, you get out of my mind. I'm keeping these, I'm not sealing these words up. I'm gonna speak these words, I'm gonna speak them even if I don't understand them. I'm gonna tell people the, what the Bible says, and I'll let the Holy Spirit explain it to them. Do not seal the prophecy of this book. The devil wants nothing more. There, the one book of the whole Bible, the devil has convinced the Christian to not read, is Revelation. He's convincing, "You don't understand it, it's too crazy. Oh, locusts coming out of the bottomless pit, and fire from the sky." You know, it wasn't that scary when we went through it? We didn't even answer all the questions. I, I didn't give you a chart and say, "This is happening tomorrow, and four days from now, it's happening." No, I just read it to you. And you got it. And you said, "Wow, I never thought of it that way." You understand, do not seal this thing up, ever again. Don't ever again seal it up. Preach the Word of God. Can I get an amen? Listen, you know Revelation one-one, you know Revelations chapter two, Revelation chapter two and three. Listen to verse eleven. Johnny Cash sings a song with the mans coming around. I don't know why I'm into, into Johnny Cash right now, but I've been listening to him over the last week or so. I guess quarantine's got me going nostalgic or something, I don't know what the deal is. But verse eleven, he, he's got a song that he quotes this verse. And this is a hard verse to, to grasp, Revelation, chapter twenty-two, verse eleven. Jesus, let, let me just read verse ten one more time. He says, "He says, 'Do, do not seal the words of the prophecy of the book, for the time is at hand. He who is unjust, let him be unjust still.'" What God? Yeah. The cheater, let him cheat. The liar, let him lie. "He who is unjust, let him be unjust still. He who is filthy, let him be filthy still. But he who's righteous, let him be righteous still. He who is holy, let him be holy still." Listen, do not look at the world and say, "Oh, everybody's doing it. Everybody's watching a little porn." Oh, man, it's just the way it is. It's sparking up our marriage. No, it's destroying your marriage. Let the unjust do whatever they're gonna do. Let the unholy do, the ungodly, let the, let the backslider do what they're gonna do, but let the righteous be righteous still. Let the holy be holy still. Let the light of Christ shine bright in you. The closer we get to the return of Christ, the more dark and sinister evil will become. The brighter Jesus is gonna shine, I'm not saying Satan's getting his grip. No, he's just turning up the heat, and people are doing more sinful things blatantly in front of people than ever before. "Let the unjust be unjust, and let the unholy, let the filthy be filthy, but let the righteous and holy be righteous and holy still. Do not grow weary of doing what's good." Don't grow weary, Clement Motte, don't grow weary, Cameron Corbett, don't grow weary of doing what's good. What's right? If you're the only one, you be the only one. If nobody else is dancing in your church for Jesus, because it's, it's too improper, you just dance still. Nobody else wants to raise their hands, you just raise your hands still. Nobody else wants to shout glory, you just shout, "Glory!" You be the herald. You be the trumpet, like Pastor Harold Hall, that's shouting louder than he's ever shouted in his life on earth. He's shouting in heaven today. You be righteous still. You lay hands on the sick. You raise the dead. You tell the mountain, "Be cast in the sea." You break down the gates of hell, because the church, the gates of hell will not prevail over the church. The church will bust down the gates, go in and set the captives free. You walk into the nightclub, and you drag the dancer out and say, "This is not where you belong anymore, we're being righteous from here on out." You go get the drunk and say, "We ain't drinking no more." You turn the TV off, you change the channel, you make the difference. Let the righteous be righteous still. I don't care what everybody else is doing. You keep tithing. I don't care what the preacher's doing with the money, that's not your responsibility. You be righteous still. I don't care what the guy over there on, on that radio station or that church is teaching. You keep teaching truth still. You do what you do. Listen, Joshua twenty-four. "And if it seems evil to you to serve the Lord..." If it seems evil to serve the Lord, oh, that's too narrow-minded. That, that gospel of Jesus Christ, he's just an intolerant. Fine. "If it seems evil to you to serve the Lord, choose for yourself who you will serve." Go bow down to Buddha, go bow down to a wooden statue. Go, go, but do it better than that. Go build your own little statue, bow down to that. Go build your four-million-dollar mansion and bow down to that baby. Woo, look at my house, ooh, yeah. Listen, bow down. Just go bow down to your job, go bow down to your, your status. Go pull out your junior high trophies, because I know you set all the records. And just go bow down to it. Listen, you do whatever you want to do. "Whoa, preacher, oh, wow." Yeah. Man, if, if, if it's sex, drugs, and rock and roll, go bow down to it. "If it seems evil to serve the Lord, choose for yourself this day whom you'll serve, whether the gods which your fathers served that are on the other side of the river..." Talking about the Egyptians. This is Joshua talking to the Israelites. They're in the Promised Land, they want to go serve the demon gods of Egypt that enslaved them. Uh, hey, listen, "If it seems evil to serve Jehovah, if Jesus is all that bad, can't watch that movie, because I served Jesus." Man, if it's that bad, just quit serving him. Okay, go watch your movie. Go pick up the gossip hotline, murder people verbally, yeah, slaughter their personality, just, just rip them a new one, just... Listen, "If it seems evil to turn the other cheek, if it seems evil to bless those that curse you, if it seems evil to you to serve the Lord, then choose this day whom you'll serve." Just pick a side. "Whether the gods of your fathers who served the, the gods on the, the other side of the river, the god of the Amorites, and whose land you dwell. But listen, 'As for me and my house, we will serve thee, Lord.'" Listen, "For me and my house, we're serving the Lord." God says, "Don't be that church of Laodicea. You're, you're either hot or cold, you're either in or out, baby. Just get on a team and play ball." But God says, "Come on in." Listen to this, Matthew thirteen, I know this is heavy, but it's in your Bible, Matthew thirteen thirteen. "Therefore I speak to them in parables," this is Jesus speaking, "'because seeing they don't want to see, and hearing they do not hear, nor do they understand. And in them the prophecy of Isaiah is fulfilled, which says, 'Hearing you will hear and shall not understand; and seeing you will see and not perceive it; for the hearts of this people have grown dull; their ears are hard of hearing, and their eyes have closed; lest they should see with their eyes.'" Twenty Twenty, Twenty for Twenty Twenty. "Lest they see with their eyes and hear with their ears, lest they should understand with their hearts and turn, so that I should heal them." Listen, God says, "Man, if you're gonna be dark, if you want the light, turn from darkness." You want Jesus chasing with all you got, and He'll heal you. He'll heal your broken heart. Don't let your childhood abuser keep you from the forgiveness and mercy of God. They've already hurt you enough. Forgive them and turn them over to God. Set them free. Forgiveness doesn't mean friendship, doesn't mean you have to have relationship with them. But forgive and come back to Jesus. Forgive your ex, forgive those who, forgive that preacher, forgive that church, forgive that group, forgive that entity. God needs you in this time, to not seal these words up and to worship God. Verse twelve. "Jesus says, 'Behold, I'm coming quickly. My reward is with me, to give to everyone according to his work.'" Dude, I cannot stress it. He's got a reward, and he's watching what we do. And he's, he's actually doing it through us. He's giving us everything we need to do it. "I am the Alpha, the Omega." I love these titles, the beginning, the end, the first, the last. "Blessed are those who do his commandments, that they may have the right to the tree of life, and may enter through the gates into the city." Remember, the tree of life and those twelve gates? I want, I cannot wait to see this tree. I can't wait to see the tree. Can't wait to see the gates. Can't wait to cheer as you're walking through the gates. I can't wait, uh, maybe you'll be cheering me through the gate, I don't know. Whoever gets there first, man, we're gonna be cheering, can you believe it? So, I, I think there's a billboard up in heaven that says, "Yeah, Cameron will be here in fourteen days, seven hours, and three minutes." You know, it'd be like, "Yee-hoo!", you know, I, I'm not gonna be saying that, but maybe it's... But the point is, man, can you not see it? Fifteen, reality check. He just said, "Blessed are those who do his commandments, that they have the right to the tree of life, and may enter through the gates of the city. But outside are dogs and sorcerers, sexually immoral, murderers, idolaters, and whoever loves and practices a lie." That's harsh reality. The word dog there didn't mean, doesn't mean four-legged, you know, beloved animals. I'm not sure that all dogs go to heaven, probably so, but... He's not talking about our pets. He's talking about the non-believer. The unbeliever, that hasn't been sanctified. Scary one is in verse fifteen, it says, "And sorcerers." On the surface, we're like, "Oh, I don't do magic, I don't, I'm not a sorcerer, I'm not a wizard." Um, that word sorcery there does mean magic arts, black arts, fortune-telling horoscopes, psychic hotlines, tarot cards, Ouija boards, uh, you know, all the, all the witchcraft. It does mean that. Talking to the dead, trying to get some answers from a loved one that, you know, forgot to leave the password to their bank account. I mean, all this stupid stuff, that's, that's witchcraft, it's black, it's occultic, it's demonic. You're not talking to your loved ones, you're talking to a demon. It's not a real person, because the Bible says, in Hebrews, your Bible says, "It's appointed on demand to die once, and then to judgment." Demons were in the room when it was just you and grandma, and demons heard the conversation too. So demons can lie and deceive us and say, "Oh, yeah, oh, grandma told just, you and grandma had the..." Listen, it's all, that's sorcery, but sorcerers also there means, is the root word for pharmakea. Pharmakea. P-H-A-R-K-A, I think, pharmaka, pharmakea is the, is the Greek word for sorcery. And it means alcohol, drug, sorcery, things that alter our minds. Listen, a lot of people struggle with addiction. God's saying, "Come out of that, I'll set you free, be addicted to Jesus." "Well, I was just born this way, I got this gene." Get born again. Just get born again, and God will overcome that. Sexual immoral. Let, let me just ask you a question, what is sexual morality? I think, I think we gotta define that to then know what, what's sexually immoral, because we live in a world that says anything goes. Two consenting adults can do whatever. What does the Bible say about sexual morality? Answer that, and anything outside of that is immoral. Listen, don't, don't live a life of, of temporal gratification. Don't live a life that, that's leading you down a road. Listen, murderers, idolaters, and whoever loves and practices a lie. The key word to this verse here is practices? Listen, you may say, "Cameron, I, I've been immoral, Cameron, I've murdered. I, I spent twenty-four, twenty-eight years, fifty years. I, man, I, I, I did, I did things nobody, I didn't even get caught for. I, I, I've worshipped the devil, I've worshipped money, I've worshipped my, my, Cameron, I've, I've broken all these. I've, what do I do? Cameron, listen. It's one thing to struggle with alcohol addiction. It's another thing to capture the label. See, when it says practice, it's there, it's like a lot of people, we don't use this word a lot, but, but it's kind of like, "Hey, what do you do? Well, I, I practice law." "Oh, so you're an attorney?" "Yeah, I, I've worked for the, you know, Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals or what." I just made that up, I don't even know if that's a real thing, but I've heard it like on TV. "Yeah, I worked for the, you know, I, I worked for this magistrate." That is a real word. Um, but, you know, they'll say, "Well, I'm a practicing attorney," or "I'm a, I practice medicine, I'm a practicing physician." Listen, practicing there means that you are identifying with it. Listen, you may struggle with pornography. You may struggle with lying. You may struggle with murder. Maybe not walking around actually stabbing people, but murdering them with the hatred that you have for them in your heart. You may really struggle with telling the truth. It's one thing to quickly repent and say, "Oh, God, I give this to you again today. Oh, God, I give you this again for the eighth time today. Oh, God, I'm not practicing that. I struggle with it, but I'm not pra-"" Listen, the devil wants us to adopt sin and then identify with it. "Oh, I am..." The world says, "Once an alcoholic, always an alcoholic." It's not what your Bible says. Says, "Once an alcoholic." But Second Corinthians says, "Now I'm a new creation for the, the, for those who are in Christ Jesus." So you may be a new creation that struggles with drinking too much. So you may be a new creation that struggles with drinking too much. But we're not claiming the identity of, well, once a cheater, always a cheater, I was just born an adulterer, no. You struggle with that. But God's setting you free, so let's not identify ourselves here. Let's, let's say, God, man, I'm struggling, listen, you can struggle. But God says, listen, I'll give you the ability to overcome it. And you may struggle with that addiction till the day you die. But you are now, no longer identifying with it, can I get an amen? You're identifying as a son or daughter of the King. And God says, listen, I'm setting you free, I know you fell down yesterday, I know, I know you drank eight gallons of tequila last night, but listen, today is a new day. And you're repenting of it. And God's saying, that's not who you are. See, these are people who will not repent, and they then say, that's just who I am, it's just the way I was made. Telling you, God loves us so much, he doesn't leave us the way we were made. He changes us into the men and women of God that he desires us to be, can I get an amen? I, Jesus, sixteen, have sent my angel to testify to you these things to the churches. Jesus sent his angel. To tell you, not, not some Bible scholar at the seminary down the, down the highway. I, Jesus, have sent my angel to testify these things to the churches, I'm the root and offspring of David. The bright and morning star, and the spirit and the bride say, come and let him who hears. Say, come. And let him who thirsts, come, whoever desires, let him take the water of life freely. For I testify to everyone who hears the testimony and the prophecy of this book. If anyone adds things, God will add to him the plagues that are written in this book, and if anyone takes away the words. Of the book of this prophecy, God shall take away his part of the book of life and from the Holy City and from things. Which are written in this book, that is a scary statement. I could preach on that. Listen, if anyone takes away from the words of the prophecy, the book of this prophecy. If you add to this book, oh, I think I'm gonna add fourteen chapters, well, that's not really, you know, exactly what God meant, he needs me to add to it. He's gonna add to you the plagues. If you take away, well, you know, listen, see, this is the danger, well, you know, I'm preaching at that church and. Boy, that sure is hard to understand, I'm just gonna skip those two chapters, cause I don't understand it, then I'm actually taking that away from people. Man, just serve the food. What's in it? I don't know, I'm just the chef, I don't, I don't know what's in it, uh, man, I'm gonna read to you chapter eighteen. Truth is, man, I don't really know what it means, but we're just gonna read it and try to get through this bad boy. Listen, if anyone takes away from the words of this prophecy, God shall take away his part from the book of life. That oughta really challenge some theology that says, there's nothing I can do. God shall take away his part from the book of life and from the Holy City and from the things which are written in this book. He who testifies to these things says, surely I'm coming quickly, amen, even so, come, Lord Jesus. The grace of our Lord Jesus be with you all, amen, and everybody said, amen, listen. You have gone through the book of Revelation. You've gone through it. Now, do you know the order of everything? No, did I answer all your questions? No, but you went through it, now do it again. Grab the notes, do it on your own, you could listen to the videos again, but, but it really wants you to get into the book yourself. Don't, don't have forty-eight commentaries. You just sit and read it, sit and soak with it. Pick up some commentaries here and there, pick up some notes, maybe listen to Chuck Missler online, listen to some other guys that have taught on the Booker. But, but you digest it. God's revealing it to you. Here's some summaries, some mastery points, I call them mastery points. If you got anything out of Revelation, I pray that you got this, it's not called the book of Revelations. So when that S rolls off your tongue, just quickly repeat it and just say, uh, Revelation. Cause it'll drill into your mind, this is all about Jesus, not the devil, not demons, not the Antichrist, not the government. Not the QAnon and the, uh, flat earth society and the, you know, not all the conspiracies, it's, it's about Jesus. And when I see Jesus, anything that's not him, I quickly go, that's not Jesus, not him. If I'm in a crowd of a thousand women, and they're all the same height of my wife, and they all have the same hair color of my wife. Trust me, they'll all be talking, I'll still hear her voice. I could listen to a thousand women talk, no, not her, no, 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 close, no, no, definitely not. What, say that one more time, no, oh, there she is. When you know who Jesus is, it's easy, so easy. To say, oh, that's a distraction. He'll reveal to you the one world government, he'll reveal to you the beast system, he'll reveal to you. The economic warfare, he'll, he'll reveal all this stuff. He'll reveal it to you, if you get anything, Revelation two and three. If you, if you don't grasp and if you don't share much of the rest of the book, share the churches with people. Read chapter two and three, memorize it, go over a hundred times. And remember this, it's not about the church down the street, it's not about the church of, of a thousand, two thousand years ago, it's not about the church. In the future, it's about our heart, we are the church, I'm the temple. Now, is it about the church two thousand years ago, the current day church and the church? It is about that, but, but when I see that it's about my heart condition. And I see the loveless church, or I see a corrupt church, or I see a compromising gospel, man. I'm not, I'm, I'm not so consumed with their spec, I'm really going, God, I'm so compromised. Oh, I'm so dead, I'm so corrupt, I lost my first love, oh my God, oh my God. It's about our heart, chapters four and five, if you can't teach the book of Revelation, you can teach chapter four and five to your friends. Let me tell you what heaven looks like. Yeah, there's these creatures there, they got eyeballs all over them, what does that mean? I don't know, but isn't that cool? Oh my God, there's creatures, what does that mean? I don't know, I don't know, there's angels there and all they, they sing and they got two angels covering their feet, two covering their face and they. There's six-winged angels, well, what does that mean? I don't know what that means, but they're, it's, it's cool. There's people under the altar asking God to revenge the blood of, of their martyrdom, what does that mean? I don't know what it means, but wow, God's hearing their prayers and they're, they're crying out that he'll strike their murderer down, go get them, God, I mean. There's so much you understand. I pray that during this study that you have eyes to see Jesus, to see the works. I, I pray that you have eyes to see Jesus, so therefore, when you see the works of the enemy, it's easy to spot. I pray this, overcome the temptation to not endure. I see it, I see it in my own life, there's days I wake up, I'm like, ah, I'm not reading the Bible today. And I'll say something like this, God, I just need the day off from you. I tried that with Stacy once, it didn't work, I think I still got a scar to prove it, but yeah, it doesn't, but nah. But when you, when you say, I mean, I wake up and I'm like, ah, I don't wanna pray today, ah, prayed like, I just got back from four days of. Church camp, I don't need Jesus today, I, I got enough for Jesus to last me a lifetime, no. Listen, I pray this, overcome the, the temptation to not endure. Overcome that temptation, to the overcomer, I'll give the right to eat from the tree of life. To the overcomer, I'll give some hidden manna, to the overcomer, he'll reign and rule next to me, to the overcomer. He'll be a pillar in the house of God, to the overcomer, I'm gonna give him a white stone with a new name on it, I can't wait for that stone. I can't wait to find out that new name. My mom and dad named me Cameron, and people know me, uh, by that name, and other people know me by. Brother or dad or husband or nephew or nie- or niece, I'm not niece, cousin, whatever. They know you as different things, some people say, oh, he's crazy, and other people go, oh, he's a. You know, and they got titles for us, but man, God calls you something special, calls you something amazing. Overcome the temptation to not endure, look forward for your reward. Fight for it, run the race to win, the Bible says. Don't just run the race to get into heaven. Just get, I'm just gonna get into heaven by the hair of my chinny chin, no. Man, get into heaven, driving the bus with forty-eight of your friends in the back. Three of them hanging out the window, cause you got a hold of their foot and you're dragging them to heaven with you. Yes, drag them with you. Don't take no. Well, I've asked them to church, I didn't say bring them to church, bring them to Jesus, quit bringing people to church. Let me just, I'll just get them to church and Cameron will save them, it's not my job to save your friends, that's why they're not my friends, I don't even like them. They're your friends, you save them. It's your family, I don't like them, you don't even like them, you save them, if you get your family saved, you'll like them, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, you be the minister. Okay, fine, bring him to church, my wife is going, what are you doing? Bring him to church, we'll tell him about Jesus, we look, but you understand what I'm saying, gee, God didn't say bring him to church, he said, you go make disciples. You baptize them, oh, I, I can't baptize them, why not? Well, just the pastor baptizes them, oh, I'm sorry, uh, I think that's in the book of Noah or the book of Misunder. No, in my Bible, it says, Jesus told his disciples, you go make disciples, you baptize them, you cast out demons, you raise the dead. You step on the head of snakes, you crush the enemy of hell. You speak to the mountain, be cast into the sea. Man, it is time to fight, it is time to quit playing baby church. We are graduating from the swim, from the baby pool. We're, we're jumping off the high dive that used to be there in Northwest Pool, I, I know some of you know what I'm talking about. Tell your friends and family about the judgment. Tell your friends and family, there's a judgment coming. We don't beat them up, I, sometimes I come across like. I don't do that when I'm talking one-on-one, I just like, there's a judgment. Listen, I know you wanna leave your spouse, and I know you wanna go marry the hottie mama across the street, cause she's twenty pounds lighter and twenty years younger. Man, you're gonna stand for judgment. And God's gonna say, what'd you do with the wife of your youth? And would you, would you teach your kids, did you teach them more about how to play ball than Jesus? Cameron, did you spend all your time working? Or telling your family about the Lord, setting the example? See, God's gonna hold us accountable. And I, I got, I got such a long list of accountability issues. I'm like, oh God, don't come back today, don't come back today, Jesus, please don't come back today, cause if you come back today, I'm so not ready. I need thirty more, I need, I need one more day to get this area, you know. God's saying, just go tell people, tell others about heaven, go tell your friends about heaven. Yeah, it's a place, it's gonna be cool. I totally wanna see you there. Heaven with our family will be cool. But heaven without Jesus won't be heaven, the reason we're going to heaven is not to see our loved ones. Is to go see Jesus, cause our loved ones, they're gonna be excited we show up, but they're gonna be going, dude, don't worry about seeing me, we don't need to make up. We don't need to talk out, we don't need to, let's go see Jesus, come on, let's go see him, let's go see him, come on, come on, come on, come on. It's all about him, amen, listen to this. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Holy and set apart is the name of God. Your kingdom come, that's what Revelations is about, Revelation is about the kingdoms coming down. Judgments coming, trumpets are coming, seals are being broken, bowls are being poured out, angels are opening up the sky, Jesus is coming on a horse. Your kingdom come. Your will be done in Cameron, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us of our debts as we forgive our debtors. And God lead me not into temptation, but deliver me from the evil one. Listen, God's delivering you. He's delivering you. For yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever, amen. God bless you, thank you for joining us, God's commissioned you, you're a mighty warrior for the King. Sing again for Jesus. Act again for Jesus, practice law for Jesus, wash clothes as just, as if you're washing Jesus's clothes. Love people, lay your hands on broken hearts. And heal them with a hug, heal them with a word, a smile. Dip into your wallet and write that ten thousand dollar check and bless that single mom with a new car that just. Is fighting so hard to live, heal brokenness. Be the man or woman God's called you to be. Go change the world. When you stand before God and he says, what did you do with what I gave you? Say, God, well, you know what, you gave me two talents, you gave me two things, man, I can talk a lot. And man, I sure could play ball really good on the court. Well, how'd you, how'd you use that for me? Well, I talked to a lot of people about you, yeah, I wasn't the preacher, I, I just talked to them. Uh, just became their friend first, and then I just asked them if they knew you, and I, I didn't even do it very well, God, he's gonna go, good job. Well done, good and faithful servant. How'd you play ball for me? Well, I wasn't the best, but God, I just gave it my all and I really enjoyed it and, and always, and did you do it for me? Yeah, I, I think I did, well done, good, whatever God's called you to do. Run with it, store up treasure in heaven. Store it up. Store, there's books being written. Put some names in it. Plant seeds, I didn't say you had to go preach and be the next Billy Graham, just plant seeds. Do it intentionally, don't just be an incognito Christian. Intentionally at, at Home Depot, intentionally stop that guy on the plumbing row, six feet away, say. Man, how are you today, man, you look, you all right? Oh no, man, this, this world's crazy, dude, man, you know what, I just want you to know, man, Jesus has got a plan for you. And I know your business is falling apart right now, but God's got you, and I'm gonna be praying for you, would you just tell me your name, I'm gonna pray for you. You can do that, it's legal, you can do that. I know, it'll be scary, they may yell at you, oh my God, he may frown at you, he may go, freak? Okay, he may just start to break down and cry. And go, what are you doing, who are you? Uh, man, I, I'm nobody, I just read the book of Revelation, some guy on the internet told me I need to stop people at Home Depot and the plumbing, I don't know what I'm doing, but. But can I pray for you? God's gonna use you in a way. That will be so simple, but yet so profound, because there'll be a plumber in heaven. That's walking through the gates going, dude, I got, I just got on the board with Jesus yesterday and I died today. Cause I ain't a very good plumber and I blew up or something, I don't know, and, and what am I doing here, and he's gonna go. Man, I'm here because some guy stopped me at H U B, or at Home Depot and told me, he was praying for me and it. I went in my truck and I just cried, cause nobody's ever prayed for me. I know those stories sound crazy, but the simplest thing. Will have the most profound impact on eternity, if you're a singer, go sing like never before. Not about you and selling records, yes, we want people to know you, and yes, we want you on international stages. And yes, we want them to buy your CD, but sing to Jesus. And some little group is gonna go, I wanna kill myself, I hate life. But every time I listen to you, it brings me peace, well, listen, you're not hearing me, you're hearing Jesus, let me tell you about him. I don't know what your job is. Go do it. I love you. Thank you so much for being a part of this. God's got a plan and it's gonna be good. Listen, we're gonna start a new series. It's gonna be about a week from now. We're gonna, we're gonna probably start it next Thursday. We'll kinda transition to a once a week format. But the next topic's gonna be on the topic of hell. And, um, I've never truly preached on hell. Um, but God has been, God has put it on my heart for about a year now, and so. We're gonna talk about hell cuz so many believers don't believe in it. So many Christians are like, I'm not real sure hell exists. Hell's a real place. We'll bring that to life. But it's not, um, so anyways, we'll get into that. We'll, we'll kick that off next Thursday. I think it's April thirtieth, the next Thursday, at six thirty. Love you. God bless you. If you need any of our notes, if you need somebody to pray for you. Uh, go to our website, whitestonechurchtx.com. Fill out the drop down. We'll bless you the best we can. Um, if God's calling you to ministry. I'm telling you, jump. Just go. Ministry's not in church. There's only like four positions in church ministry, but there's like a billion ministry positions outside. My very first pulpit was a taco stand at a daycare. I cooked breakfast for about a hundred and twenty-five snotty-nosed kids. Some of you may be listening. Yeah, you were snotty-nosed little brats. I cooked your breakfast. But I'll never forget on that. Pulpit. That was my pulpit. I would make breakfast tacos. And I would just talk to the moms and dads as they came in. I would talk to the kids. And a lot of times we just talked to them about nothing. But then a lot of times those conversations transitioned into. Hey, what do you know about God? What do you think about him? Well, why do, why do you believe that? Oh, that's cool. Okay. Well, explain that to me. Wherever you're at, that's your pulpit. Wherever you're at. Use social media for the gospel, not the gossip. Use it for the gospel. You got a voice, you got a talent, you got a gift. God's opening up amazing doors. So Father God, we love you and we bless you. And Lord, we say, come quickly, Lord Jesus. God, open up our eyes and, and Holy Spirit, I pray for divine insight. Twenty-twenty vision for my friends. That we'll see Jesus. And when we see him. We'll go, I knew that was you. I knew that was you, cuz I've been seeing you for years. Let's go see Jesus in this world. Seek first the kingdom of God and you'll find it. Seek first the kingdom. Walk in H U B looking for the kingdom of God. Walk into school looking for the kingdom. Walk into work, walk into your house looking for the kingdom. Seek first the kingdom. And you'll find it. God bless you. Thank you so much. Love you. We'll see you next Thursday. Thanks for coming.